Good morning. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole meeting this morning. If you would please stand and join me in a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This morning, we are here to discuss one item, the IDA. And there's been a PowerPoint prepared that will explain history, mission statement, bios of the members, the pilots are on there. And Craig Clark will be leading that. And he will be here momentarily. He's on his way. So when he gets here, we'll begin that pilot point, which will lay out the foundation, and questions can be asked to Craig at that time. As I said, the only thing we're talking about this morning is the IDA and related issues to that. So County Administrator Chris Annap would like to add a few things.
Well, I could probably start that conversation out a little bit while we wait for Dr. Clark. He should be here fairly soon. So I know the other day, we had added to the agenda, the reappointment and appointment of one new member for the IDA. And that wasn't something that had been discussed prior. It was added to the agenda, I believe, over the weekend, as were a couple of other board appointments or committee appointments that this board makes. And in retrospect, I don't believe that really probably gave this board, which includes five new members, that's 30 percent, over 30 percent of new members who don't have any familiarity with some of these committees or boards enough time to really deliberate and make an informed decision on those appointments. So for today, we asked Dr. Clark if he could come in. And I've been over with him, some things that I thought maybe you would find useful as you start to consider the appointments to the IDA board. So he'll be looking at the current members and just a brief bio on who they are, where they're from, and some of their background. He'll tell you a little bit about himself. He'll tell you about what the IDA does, might even tell you about maybe some misconceptions about what the IDA does that they really don't do. And then he can give a little brief overview of what pilots are out there that the IDA is involved in. Yes, Legislator Root?
No.
No. Am I on? I know today's to talk about the IDA. I watched the P and D meeting the other week, and there were some questions. I think not only do we need to talk about the IDA board makeup, I think if we're going to be hypercritical of one board, we need to talk about and have a broader discussion on how all boards get appointed. Who appoints them? What is the vetting on these boards? I think it would be a good discussion for all of us, the new boards, how that process goes, not just for the IDA. And I think we also need to have a larger discussion. I learned this about five months ago. If it's an advisory board to the legislator, we have some advisory boards that have legislators on those boards. We create these advisory boards to advise us as legislators. And should we, this is a question, should we have legislators on those advisory boards? I think legislators are welcome to go to any of these committee meetings if we have an interest, but to become a voting member on an advisory board that is advising us doesn't seem right. This became, I didn't realize it, it was one of those ha-ha moments. I totally agreed and said, do we need to look at all of our boards and look at that? Do we need a better process for all boards and who gets put? I don't want to open up a can of worms, but if we're going to be hypercritical on one board, we just passed how many boards the other day without a flinch. Nobody questioned what the vetting process was on that. I welcome this conversation, and I think it will do us good in the long run, going forward on all boards, if we all understand what that vetting process is. I think it will help today with the IDA, but I would like to see a broader discussion.
And that is something that certainly I could assist with. The clerk of the board could assist with that, getting descriptions of what these advisory boards and committees do, and what the memberships are, and how people get appointed to that. You did also appoint members to the Community Services Board and the Board of Health, and those boards are equally important, matter of fact, probably more important than some of your advisory boards, as the Board of Health actually sets policy for the Health Department rather than this group, and makes some important decisions there. And Community Services Board sets the policy for the Community Services Department, which is Dr. Anderson, and covers mental health and a number of other important issues. And really, it's, those boards exercise more control than this board does over those two departments. So those are some important decisions. It's definitely worth you deliberating and asking questions on those appointments.
So if I can just follow up with that, I think it's also maybe not known, and I'm speaking for myself, which boards function as an advisory to this board? I believe the IDA, you would say they're not an advisory committee to this board. They have a purpose and a function that they're carrying out that we as legislators cannot do. So they're really not advising us, they're carrying out what their purpose is in their structure. So which boards, soil and water, which, you know, I can go over all of these, which boards are really advisory committees? And which boards have different functions and purpose? And it's not clear to me what, which, how these all work.
And just because they have the word advisory in them doesn't necessarily mean they are all advisory board. You have things like your Trails Advisory, which is purely a citizens advisory board, and then you have something like your Fire Advisory Committee, which has a specific function that's a little bit different, more broad than just citizens giving you input.
If I could just add something here. We simply did what has been done every time that this happens, every four years. We gave a list of a lot of them to you and asked which ones you'd like to volunteer to serve on. So we tried to put people there. I sat down with Brenda. She has a little flipboard thing in there with every committee, what it's supposed to do, who's on it, what are the terms of service, how are they appointed, was it board-appointed, chair-appointed? All this stuff in there was rather eye-opening to me. And certainly, it's merit in sharing that information. It will take a number of cows to go through them, the unbelievable number of them. And we're trying to share the wealth, so to speak. Also, in some cases, I called chairman of those boards, when they're not our people, not legislators, and asked about that. You know, you've got openings coming up, you know, are you interested in a certain person? I've had them call me and express that interest. And so it, there's a little more than throwing darts at the board. So there was a process, but it was really, my understanding was just similar to what's been done every four years, or when the other terms expire on folks. So, and some of those committees have representatives from specific groups out there in the county. So it works that way. But point well taken, that it would be good for everybody to have a little more exposure to that. So we can do that.
And for the IDA portion of the discussion, and maybe as long as we're still waiting, I can give you a little bit of background on currently, you know, we have Dr. Clark, who serves as the IDA Executive Director. And he also works for Alfred State College through our Contract for Economic Development. I do meet regularly with Dr. Clark. He does provide me with information on just the general status of how IDA projects are going. I feel like we have a good system of communication, so I don't want you to feel as though, you know, he's leaving administration here in the dark over projects. That's not the case. I have not attended IDA board meetings, although I certainly read the minutes and can view them on YouTube, thanks to modern technology. But if that's something you wish me as the administrator to be more active in, I certainly could do that. As you know, we have five members that are looking for reappointments, and Mr. Ricky will be a new member that was put on the agenda. The five members that are there, only one has been there more than six years, so they're all fairly recent members. Other information on the IDA, I know Ms. Ross and I receive a lot of information on the pilots. We do get the pilot agreements. Also, we do receive the audits for the IDA, which we incorporate into the county audit. We met this summer with our own auditor to go over the preparation of our audit, and went over the IDA's audit as well. And that's due to the bonding relationship, the actual bonds, not bonding, that the county has with the IDA, that we include their audit as part of our audit. It's a public authority, so they definitely have a Paris public authority reporting that they have to do every year. And you can go online and read their Paris reports, which also includes the status of every pilot, I believe. And their website actually was revamped a couple of years ago, and has a lot of other good information on there. Like I said, there's the YouTube videos of most of their meetings, the minutes, agendas. You can look over their bylaws. Most of their annual reports are on there. Dr. Clark comes here monthly, reports to P and D. He does that both under his contract with SUNY for Economic Development, but also as an update on IDA projects. He files an annual report for IDA that's included in our journal proceedings. So you could go back every year if you wanted to and ask Brenda to pull up the annual reports and see kind of how the IDA has progressed. It's just a short, one-page report will kind of highlight the projects for the year. So there's a variety of information out there that if anybody really wants to know a little bit more on just the general background of the IDA, it's available, we could put some of that together for you. So I just kind of wanted to throw that out there.
Mr. Healy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the report to the Economic Development Committee, is that correct? Is that just a formality, or does the?
Well, I'd have to...
Director have any, that committee chair have any actual authority over them?
I think, you know, you're probably delving into questions I don't really know the exact answer to. I would guess that there's probably something in your board rules saying that that would be the reporting committee that if the IDA wanted to come in and report to, that'd be the committee they show up to. But I don't believe that there's any actual authority of that committee over that IDA board.
My other question, I guess, was, does Mrs. Root, the chair of the Planning Economic Development Committee, or yourself have a copy of the IDA bylaws?
I could download and print them. They're right on the IDA's website. I don't print a copy. I usually just go to their website and read them when I want to reference them. But we could, we could provide copies of those.
I would leave that up to the rest of the board, if they think that would be something they'd be interested in taking a look at or not, or if they just wanted to go online and access them.
And I know they were recently updated. I believe if you go back and look at the history, like I said, six years ago, most of these members were put on there. And that was Mrs. Hopkins and Mr. Shaler added in 2016, Mr. Frank and Mr. Willday were added in 18. Dr. Clark became the Executive Director in 16. So there were kind of, in the past six years, was a lot of changeover. And I know they revamped their bylaws in 16, and I think that was part of the transition to Dr. Clark being the Executive Director. So I think they looked a little bit different prior to 2016.
Thank you.
I would just add that, as I watched the last four years and all that was going on, and watched the reports that came from Dr. Clark, and then the reactions of legislators and all, it was a growing concern of mine that something needed to be adjusted a little bit, and how we could have a stronger confidence or whatever. And so I had a conversation with a legislator about this, and asked for suggestions, what might help, that kind of thing, and listened to that. And then I went and had a conversation with Dr. Clark, and talked to him about it. And it was in that conversation that I recommended and discussed with him having John Ricky appointed to the IDA. And helped him, we discussed that. He was very much in favor of it, thought this would be good and give another voice here. And there's always those things that go on at IDA that cannot be talked about. It just is the nature of the beast. If you've done anything with this kind of stuff, these kinds of things that come up, and that there has to be confidentiality for a long time until the projects can go public. And so there's an element where we as legislators have to trust our representatives, our people who are there, do this. And that's what I was trying to work for in getting John appointed to this. And that's how his name got on there. So that's my fault. But I think it would be a good addition. So that's how we got to that point with those. The rest of the conversation with Craig, is there anybody that's planning to step down or wants to, or we keep the same numbers? And most of the time, the chairs of those committees or directors recommend any changes from within their membership outside of legislators. So, other questions? Mr. Rumfeld.
And just on the committees as a whole there, do we have a public relations officer directly to go to the press for anything? I mean, I think that would have saved a lot of egg on our face, and would have, some of the misconceptions that came out about these committees. I mean, I had no idea, the IDA, since, I've been researching it since it was brought up the last meeting, and I was really not online with what they do. I mean, I'm sure Craig, Dr. Clark can offer and fill me in more, but I've been researching it since the last meeting to get a better idea of it. But I mean, over the whole Cuba cheese thing and other incident, other stuff that's been going on in the county, I think it would be appropriate to have somebody appointed as a press spokesperson, so they don't go, you know, somebody that only that person, you know, and somebody just trained to do it, or gets the training to do it, that knows what they can say, what they can't say, especially on the confidentiality. And then I'd like to say, thank Legislator Harris for just emailing us the IDA bylaws.
So I can answer that. The clerk of the board is appointed the Public Information Officer. That was due to the number of press releases that were going out in response to COVID. We did want to have one central person to kind of handle that. But yes, trying to find someone to channel press releases through, have a better just presence in the community is something that we have focused on. I know Legislator Root and I have had a number of discussions on this matter. I am in the middle of shopping for a deputy county administrator, and a lot of that interviewing process has focused on public relations. That would be a primary duty of the deputy going forward. We have not found the candidate yet. We've done a lot of interviews, but we have not hired anyone yet. So we've been going through that since about August, I believe, looking for deputies. So we're working on it.
I just wanted to add, and it's funny that Legislator Rumfeld said that, because I was thinking the same thing, and a suggestion might be to look at some of the schools, specifically Genesee Valley has a really good PR piece to it, and they have somebody who does, and it, the struggle, I think, is that we don't have a paper. We don't have a newspaper, and even if we did, people don't always read them anymore. So we need an online presence as well, I feel. And I'm sure Mrs. Root knows this, but the one at Genesee Valley is really good. So, you know, you want to take a look at something that...
And I think that was a new addition for Genesee Valley, and I think a couple other schools may be following suit, too.
Yeah, they're very progressive, and the gentleman, I happen to know him, so it's been interesting to watch. But they have a lot more than just a Facebook page. And I think keeping on top of public relations is big right now, like, because we don't want to be looked at as secretive.
Yes, and I think, I'm sorry, Legislator Root.
Yeah, I just want to follow up with all that, and a couple things. One is, the IDA meetings are open to the public, so anyone here can go down to any of those meetings. Second is, a good catch on the PR. This is something that came up in, what were those, what was that Excel spreadsheet with all of those comments on? When did we do that, back in 2000?
The roundtable.
The roundtable.
That was part of the orientation kind of for the last board. They had an orientation with a roundtable.
2018. And there was over, and we got together and spent a day, and brainstormed and talked in with the department heads, and it came up multiple times, nine times, that we needed a communication, central communication source to handle our PR. So we've been working on that. We know that is, you know, the world changes, and at one time, we might not have needed it, but as you're seeing, high schools are doing it, everyone is doing it. PR is very important. And with, so I know County Administrator Annap is working on that diligently to get this on board. And I have all the faith that once we get that on, a lot of these problems will go away.
And just getting back to the social media presence, depending on what demographics you're looking at, you use different social media platforms. Facebook is not really that popular with younger people. They tend to go more towards Instagram. There's different ways you could do that. So it's more of a, it's not just, oh, do one thing, look at one platform. I think you're focused on a lot of things. Our Office of the Aging has several community forums every year. One of the questions they do ask is, where do you get your news from? And I was reading their answers, and Nita Madison had just done those reports a few months ago. And sometimes it was just the church bulletin boards, or the bulletin boards at the post office, or the radio. People, in those demographics, might not be going online as much, and they might not be reading a newspaper because we don't have one. So I think it's important to actually ask the public where it is they get the news, and try to incorporate all of our citizens when we go forward with communications.
Are there other things related to this? Mrs. Burgess?
I just have a question, maybe this is a Craig question. Is the IDA board paid? And do they keep their own books? Terry, do you have anything to do with their finances? So it's all, it's strictly their own, right? And do their members get paid?
Correct. It's simply their own books. They have their own bookkeeper down there. I did keep the books for the $3.5 million that we purchased for that bond. I kept that check register and wrote those checks. But other than that, there's no involvement in our office in the IDA finances. As far as them getting paid, they do not get paid.
And I think you can see a lot of their financial data on their website as well, including transactions, right down to when they make the bond payments to the county, it shows up in their ledger. I think that's right on their website.
But the pilot payments come here?
Most of the pilot payments come here. There are a couple that don't. But yes, most of the pilot payments are billed by our office on an annual basis. But I have a report for that that we can get into later, but, okay? Yep?
Dr. Clark is here. If you could give the thumb drive, I think it goes down here. Mr. Barnes?
Yes, I had a quick question. You say some of the pilots come here and some don't. What's the reason, what's the reason for the difference?
It depends on the way that the pilot agreement has been written. So some of them are written that they are billed by IDA, some of them are written that they are billed by the county treasurer, and then distributed from the county treasurer to the other municipalities.
So the IDA has that latitude to...
I believe so. It's part of the agreement, what's ever negotiated with the business.
We prefer to have Terry do it. But there was one that was negotiated before I got on the board that was actually billed through us.
So that's the IDA that makes that decision?
Yes.
And without...
Actually, in some counties, they do all of the billing.
All right. That's without any blessing from the county at all?
No. We would obviously work with the county on that, because if the county prefers to, which they've done, history-wise, they've always done the pilots, and I think it's better. But the one reason I know Stuben County started doing it, because then they knew more, right when somebody didn't pay, they actually knew for sure. But it's a lot more work for, obviously, us to do it, and they already have it set up. So we wouldn't change it unless the county wants to change it.
I think we're ready for the PowerPoint?
Sure.
If you would like to go through that. Dr. Clark, please.
Sure. I will if it gets up. So it's kind of IDA 101, just so we can answer some of the questions that already came up, as well as just what the IDA really is. So you can go ahead, Brenda. Basically, in 1969, there was a municipal law that was passed, that now every county that I know of, I think they all have an IDA, there's actually about over 100. So in some counties, there's multiple IDAs, and Stuben is one of them. As you all know, Hornell has their own IDA, and up in Erie County, there's a number of them. The larger cities, towns would ever have their own IDAs. As I, I'll reference a couple times, almost all this information I'm showing, except for the history part, that is just kind of telling you what an IDA is, is on our website, including our financials. Go ahead. So this is the purpose that we have on the website. And basically, it's retention, growth, and expansion of facilities and equipment in businesses. Most of the IDAs, especially in rural communities, spend a lot of time on retention and expansion, although we still want to obviously attract companies, and that's been part of what we've been trying to work on since I've been the director. Go ahead. And the mission is, we do that through incentives. We give no money. We've never had money in the past to give to anybody. The only people that could give money when we tried to attract a client was Empire State Development. And in fact, when the last one, the large ones that we were working on, that's what would make the difference, Empire State Development would come with true money and cash. And we have incentives, but incentives, and I'll discuss them all later, but primarily are our pilots, mortgage tax abatement, as well as sales tax abatement, and potentially bonding. So we don't give any money. Section 11, I don't, I didn't do the whole, I didn't pull up the whole thing, I just put up section 11, which dealt with the actual members of the board of our bylaws. And basically, it notes the term office of each of the agency members of the board, and the legislature actually appoints all the board members. And traditionally, they've done that every four years at the same time with all the legislators. Whoops, all the legislators are actually elected. Apologize. Just a walkie, I'm a faculty member. So members, since I've been around, and I think it's been sort of a history, as the executive director myself brought it to the chair of the Board of Legislators, and typically, we kind of keep the same board members, and then we replace them as we need to. And so all the board members that were brought forward last week, which apologize, I could not be here on the short notice, are current board members. And if there are new board members, we look at what's needed on the board, and we'll go through each member as we go through. Typically, business people with varying backgrounds, because we're looking at businesses. So it makes a lot of sense to have people from the business community on the board. And although not requirement or bylaws, we have had in the past couple boards a legislator, which I think makes a lot of sense. And although not requirement or bylaws, we have had, in the past couple of boards, a legislator, which I think makes a lot of sense. Before I go through each board member, that was a question you were talking about. Is this is a whole separate entity from the county? Really, the reason they've set these up is on those other couple of slides. So, we can do these incentives. And it's not meant to be part of the county. It's a separate entity from the county. And we report directly to the, the state, as well as the county. So anyways, Rich Ull has been on the board, I, at least two, probably three or four terms. I can't remember. I think I mostly know Rich. He works at the Evans Agency. He used to be Richardson, Stout, and Wellsville. He's worked with almost every town and village in the community, as far as a insurance agent. He's very helpful. He's been the board chair as long as I've been on, associated with the board. And I'll say this about all of our board members, they're very physically conservative, meaning that we don't take a lot of risks. So, which is, I think, is also good. So, Rich is the chair and has been and is proposing to be a chair again. The actual officers are selected by the board, once we get a board in place again. Next. Judy, as you know, was the last legislator on the board. She is asked to, to continue her, her term. And all the board members think that's a good thing. She adds a good value as being a community member, also a business person from the dairy side, and obviously, from the Hume or Fillmore area. Randy Shaler is the current mayor of Alfred. Wellsville, sorry, sorry. I'm thinking Alfred, I don't know why. Wellsville, he can't read. And he's been very active in the community. And also, he's a resource management person at Oates Eastern. Because he's been very valuable when we were building the, the water line. And his construction background is very helpful. Douglas Frank, Doug Frank, most people know him. He's been very active in the county. He's on there primarily because of his banking background. And has been very helpful, and currently is the treasurer. No, he's retired. But he's been very helpful to us because of his banking background. Yeah. Yeah, he's retired. And Skip Welday, we added him because of his background with Morgan Stanley. And again, because we do so many financial things, he's very helpful. And we're looking particularly at startups. He's actually helped fund startups in his past life. He's now retired. But again, his perspective is very good. And we, especially on the micro enterprise grants, we've talked about small startups. So, those are the five that were forwarded, and are current board members. Go ahead. And then myself, I don't want to read through all my stuff. But basically, I put myself in there because I was appointed in 2016. The board basically appoints, appoints the IDA director, the IDA themselves. And I was attending meetings as the county economic developer. You can go through that. That's pretty, not to go through the, you can go through these fairly quickly. And it says, since 2015, I've been working with the county. And that's the one thing that I think I'll clarify right now, is most of my time is really spent on doing economic development for the county. Certainly, I still am the executive director of the IDA. We meet monthly, and we offer incentives. But a lot of discussions with potential clients and even companies doesn't always go through the IDA because we don't always offer incentives to some of these companies. And I do serve on the Incubator Works Board. That's the incubator in Alfred and Painted Post. I'm board member of the Invest Buffalo Niagara Group out of Buffalo. It's a Western Region Development Group. And I do attend and am member of the New York State Economic Development Council in Albany. And I'm the executive committee member of the Community College of Appalachia, and still the state director for post-secondary skills. So, I still have some other duties. So, the being on the, the Community College of Appalachia is very helpful because we get to meet with the, the heads of the Appalachian Regional Commission on an annual basis. So, basically, I'm going through now the incentives that we can offer. As I mentioned, they're not always offered. But if they, if people make out a financial assistance application, which is online, we can offer these incentives. First is taxable and tax-exempt bond financing. We've done that for both Alfred University and Houghton. And in fact, Houghton is right now asking us to do another bond refinancing at this time. We do sales tax forgiveness on material and equipment on projects. So, when you're building a project, you're bringing in equipment. If it's going to be taxed, we can offer that as an incentive. Then we do payments in lieu of taxes. I have another whole slide on that because I think people are kind of confused about those. But we primarily reduce property taxes typically for five years, and then five more years if you ramp it up. So, it's over, typically, a 10-year period. And then we can do exemptions on mortgage recording tax, which is also typically about 1% if they do get a mortgage. So, the pilot is just like it says, it's payment in lieu of taxes. And you were talking about it as I walked in. Pilots are developed, we have on our online system, on our website, uniform tax exemption policy because we have to have a uniform policy. We can go outside it. But we have a uniform policy that we try, try to use. And the typical pilot is one to five is 100% exemption. That means they don't pay taxes for five years on property tax. And then the sixth year, it starts ramping up. And then in year 10 is the last year. And by year 11, they typically pay full property taxes. And it's called payment in lieu of taxes because it's not, it's a 100% tax rate. But they don't typically pay any pilot the first five years. And then on clean energy, we have a standard process with all the small ones. I didn't go into the larger ones because we have not done a larger one yet. But they take, they still pay all the property taxes on the land. If it was ag, land exemption, they would lose their land ag exemption, pay all their full property taxes, and then pay $2,500 per kilowatt for all the equipment that's installed on the, on the site. That seems like a low number because some of the counties are higher than that. We've made a policy decision that the other money, which is usually about $2,000 to $2,500, goes directly to the town. So, the town has a host agreement. And we will not do a clean energy project in any community unless the town agrees. So, the town has to negotiate a host agreement to begin with, agree to the fact that they want this clean energy. And then we will go forward with a pilot, which means that the equipment itself would be taxed at that $2,500 per, it's megawatt, not kilowatt, sorry. I figured, I made a mistake. It's not mega. Wish it was kilowatts, megawatts. And basically, they would pay that for anywhere from 15 to 30 years. Are there any questions on that? Anything I've done so far? Sorry. Good class. Yeah, I should, I should have asked before. Apologize.
Going back to the, the board itself.
Right.
Is there a limit to the number of members that can be on the board?
It's five to seven.
So, yep, so, right now, you have?
Five. And we, we were potentially going to add one. When I talked to the board chair, we talked about adding a, a member from the legislature. So, that would be six.
And that five to seven, that was set in the original?
That's in the bylaws, yeah.
I think it, it's also in statute. I think statute is three to seven, but you've increased it to, I think you want at least five.
Five to seven is a good number. Yeah, three's too small. Seven's really, you know, fine. But once you get too big, you just can't make decisions sometimes. We've had six most of the time I've been on the board.
Thank you.
Sorry, just Mike.
Backing up to what we discussed, you mentioned Houghton and Alfred.
Right.
What was that? There was a sales tax forgiveness?
No, Alfred and, and Houghton have both, not the sales tax forgiveness, they both have done financing through us, which means they've gone out and got bonds.
Okay.
Alfred University.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
When you talked about the pilots, the property tax is forgiven. And this may be a stupid question, but is that just on land only? Do they have to pay taxes on the buildings that?
No, anything that's on the building as well, that they build. That's the purpose of it, to give them an incentive, so everything. They do still have to pay fire protection. Yes?
The, the one solar rate, I don't think you all had anything to do with it, the one up at Houghton College?
No, I was not.
But that one is exempt from the property tax, but not from special districts.
Right.
So, beyond fire, they have to pay water and sewer.
Yeah, all the special.
Districts also.
They have to pay, I mentioned fire, everybody has fire, but a lot of places don't have water and sewer. But they still have to pay everything.
All special district taxes they have to pay.
Mike?
So, just to clarify, clarify that, that they are not exempt from any special district taxes?
Any special district.
Water, sewer, and fire.
Obviously, most of the ones that we've been doing with solar only have the fire protection. They don't have water and sewer, but they have to pay everything else, all protection, yes. They can't be exempt from those. Is there, go ahead. We can go to the next one. If there's a question, they'll bring it up. So, the process is, I thought it'd be good to have the process up here because it's, it's not always clear. This is a financial aid application, which is submitted on the, it was actually on our website. And what they do is they go through the size of the project, the kind of the project, where it's located. Sorry, it's not me. What are the benefits? I'll turn mine off. What are the benefits to the community primarily retained or new jobs? And then the board reviews that for economic impact or effects before we do anything. At that stage, that project is public. Because when we discuss that in a public forum, we post it. So, that financial aid application is, is, it's how everything becomes public. With some projects, they may never get to that phase. They may never decide to do that financial application. And most companies don't want to do that until they're sure they're going to do a project. Because once they've given it to us as a financial aid application, as a public document, and we, and we debate it, discuss it publicly. So, that's why you'll, you'll see sometimes when I talk to you as a board, I talk about projects without naming who's doing what. They have not made an application, or they don't want to make it public at that time. Once it's public, it's public. So, there is no way to hide that, and we don't want to. Yes?
You, you sign an agreement with them?
There'll be some times, there's, there's been two cases in the, in the recent history that I've been signing non-disclosure agreements, yes.
But anybody else can also sign? I mean, if it weren't, if you wanted to bring it to the Board of Legislators, we could sign the same type of an agreement, correct?
You could, as long, yeah, it's really up to the company who they want to disclose to and then have a signature of, yes. So, yeah, they could include more people. I know there's been one other time that they've had two people assign and not just me. And then there's a standard fee schedule. How we operate is based upon a 1% fee based upon the project value. So, if it's a $10 million project, we end up charging $100,000. So, most of our projects are the, in that range, the five to $10 million project. But it depends. That's how we, we live. When I started on the board, the history was, we had done, I think, one or two projects or pilots. And basically, they had no money to, to run off from. And now, we finally do because of the clean energy projects, yes.
Okay, so that includes the clean energy?
Yes, the clean energy.
And it's based on the construction cost or the value of the property?
Value of the whole project. So, most, most of the clean energy projects you've been doing are seven to $9 million. There's a couple actually over $10 million. So, most of them have been the $60,000 to $70,000 range that they've had to pay.
It's a one-time?
One-time upfront payment.
Thank you.
And until two years ago, we really didn't have enough money in any budget to do anything. Now that we're doing these many clean energy projects, we are going to have some funds. We're hoping to set up some revolving loan funds and/or grant programs. But until recent history, we didn't have enough money to operate, to be honest with you. But that's only happened the last two years.
Stop me if, if this is forthcoming, but the bond that the county holds, is that?
I don't have that. We can discuss it when I get through the IDA. I didn't put that in here, but we can talk about that.
Okay, thank you.
I know it's a question. It's no problem. I was just talking about the IDA in general, how we operate.
How big does a business have to be for you to help it? Because somebody, when I was campaigning, it was one of the questions I had, that said that people were told their business was too small for you to help.
Well, to be honest with you, to go through the whole pilot process, one, it has to be the right kind of project. You know, typically, it's manufacturing. We can do retail, and we have actually done other projects. But we have to be in areas that are basically depressed, if you go outside manufacturing. And we only do that in occasions. The issue on the size of the project is now, do they have the fee that we pay? But there's a lawyer's fee. So, the project, when it gets too small, becomes a problem because the lawyer fees sometimes outweigh the benefits. Because it's going to cost, it depends on how complicated the project is, but you're talking $4,000 to $5,000 to do the lawyer's fees or more. And that's the real issue. Because I have talked to some smaller companies about doing this. But then, when they find out, between the paying us the 1% and the lawyer's fees, you're talking $10,000 to $20,000, and then it may not be effective for them to do it. Because the benefits don't outweigh the cost. That's the problem. And that's why I'm hoping to do some revolving loan funds or small grants, now that we have some money, so we can help some smaller companies. Except for, because the incentives are really meant for larger companies. Does that make sense? Because I've had that question. People have called me. I tried to explain, here's the cost. And when I tell them the cost of getting into the system, it's going to be probably $10,000 to $20,000. They say, oh, that's not worth the fact that, even if I got a pilot, you're not going to help me enough. So, and then all the lawyer fees are paid by the client. They don't go through us. They pay directly to the lawyer. And then if benefits exceed $100,000, in other words, if they're getting out of enough taxes benefits or pilot benefits, then we do a public hearing. And all the ones that we do typically are over $100,000. And then we review that financial incentives after the public hearing because we want to make sure that obviously, the public has a chance to know what we're offering, owing to offer before we do it. And then the paperwork starts, the lawyer does what they call lease, leaseback. And so, we're in the title chain, but we don't typically, we don't own it. But we're in the title chain. That's how we can give these incentives. Because the IDA can only give incentives if they're in the title chains such that they, on paper, have a lease, leaseback. So, they lease it to us, we lease it back to them. And then all fees are paid before a project is finalized. And that's what we call closing a project. And all above is posted on our website and is in public meetings. So, there is nothing that we do that isn't open to the public.
Craig, when in this process is the pilot negotiated and the town, village, school, and county get involved?
It depends on the project. As I said, the clean energy projects, we have a, we have a set. If we go outside that, we would let the town know. But we, as a clean energy project, again, we wouldn't do a pilot until you've already got a host agreement. The very few other projects we've had is we try to let the, the town, the county, and we haven't done one in the village, but we let the village know when we're going through that process. But they're not at the table officially. But I can tell you, we, we let them know. And if I don't, I get, they, they call me. And it, so, they make sure we, we get them knowing somehow. Most have been clean energy projects. Mike, looks like you're contemplating a question.
I, I guess, when you, the IDA took the property up at the Wellsville Airport off of GE's hands there.
Right.
GE donated it to, I remember, the first time I heard about it was when Wellsville still had a, a newspaper, 2016. It was in the Sunday Edition. I picked up the Sunday Edition of the Spectator there for Wellsville, and it says, big headline three days before the. I picked up the Sunday Edition of the Spectator there for Wellsville, and it says, big headline three days before the November election. Schumer brokers deal to give, GE to give IDA, they're building it.
Yeah, the GE Lufkin slash building, yes.
And I don't recall hearing anything about it beforehand, or having the legislators approached about it beforehand, to see, I mean, that, you, you said we're part of the process that was taken off the tax roll.
That was already off the tax rolls.
GE had it, they had a pilot on it, is that what it was?
Lufkin already had a pilot on it.
Okay, Lufkin, GE bought Lufkin. So what was their, do you know what the tax loss was there?
I don't know, I can tell you, I don't know what off the top of my head it was, no.
It went down a little bit.
They had, well, they had an issue because they were, here's, at that time, I wasn't the IDA Director, I was working as the Economic Development. Just, just it started actually in the IDA. And when, when GE said they were going to close it, the real issue is, do you go back and try to get the money back from them on the fact that they had got, had a ongoing pilot? Or they had been paying full taxes already? And the question was, it was more beneficial to us to actually get the million-dollar building, and then we basically are leasing it back, leased to buy to PM Research. So it was more beneficial to us and the community to actually get the building, have control of it, because there was no guarantee they were ever going to pay those taxes.
Well, we had the building originally, right, that was an IDA.
That's another.
That was a failed IDA project to begin with, wasn't it?
We owned it many, many years ago, yes.
Yeah.
Then it went to the bank, and then it was transitioned to, to Thotus Eastern, and then basically Lufkin bought it.
And you weren't with the IDA Director at the time, you said?
No, that was a long time.
No, but you were the planning and economic development head, right?
When the whole process was taken over.
And Alfred State, because we had a contract with Alfred, Alfred State, SUNY.
To do the economic development, correct?
Okay.
That was a year before I took over the IDA, yes.
Was there any conversation, do you recall, with us, with the legislature?
On the building itself, no.
All right, thank you.
And then here I just went through, I tried to report, and I will make sure that it's more clearly articulated in my annual report, my weekly, monthly report, sorry, of what the IDA activities are versus everything else I do. But it's always in the annual report, it's always been discussed. And then obviously, we have monthly review at the IDA of all of our financials. And the new ruling from ABO is that we now post all those, not just the annual audits, which we do, which are posted on our website. But our monthly financials are also posted now, because everything we discuss at the board meetings has to be posted publicly. So both January, and I think it was December was the first time we started posting those, because it was required as of November. So if anybody wants to see our monthly financials, they're also online as well. And then I said that annual report, also to the Board of Legislators, I send it to Brenda, I don't know where it goes, Brenda? Does it go anyplace to the full board?
It's on our, the annual reports are on our website.
Yeah, I don't know where they go, I know where.
There's a whole section for annual reports, and you can click on them and go through each department.
I do two annual reports, I do one for the economic development, one for the IDA.
I believe they're both on there for most years, and then they're in each journal of proceedings as well. So if you were to go to the county website, go to the journal proceedings, most years have annual reports due.
If anybody wants to.
A copy is always given to the board members as well.
I thought they did, I just didn't know, I know I submit them to you, I don't know the process after that. And then as you were talking, when I first came in, we have our own financial audit done annually. I do give a copy of that to Terry, and it's also posted on our website. And I don't know, I know I had trouble with some of the links on the older ones, I know 19 and 20 are on there. 16, 17, 18, I'm having trouble getting the links fixed, but they have been posted. And if you want copies, I can get you copies, it's public information. And then we do a Paris report through the state, which we also submit all this information again. So we, we're reporting this multiple times to multiple entities, so it's pretty public. So just letting you know, if you want anything, we can get you copies of stuff that you can want directly versus on our website. And then I just went through, because I know it was questioned, and so I went through, there's two slides that talk about all the current and existing pilots. This is all we have, this is all that's been reported to Paris, it's all the ones that Terry builds, and the current pilot, those billings, they just came out. I just got copies of them, hope I translated all the numbers correctly. But the four on there, they just got, came out in January, or, and the other ones, the other two, PM Research and Stilly, are still in their first five years, so they're not paying any pilots yet. And you can see, somebody had asked, I know you've asked a number of times, of who's behind, the only one that's behind is Swain at this time. They actually paid up quite a bit this last year, so they're behind just about, just over a year, but not much. The other one that was way behind was the Alliance project, but they paid over $700,000 this last year, so they're all caught up.
Craig, when a pilot expires, their time, the 15 years, whatever it is, I think sometimes it can slip through the.
Not with Terry.
Okay. Well, that, that was my question is.
If he has a copy of the full pilot documentation.
So then, Terry, you would be responsible for putting it back on the roll, or is it the assessor?
No, it's actually the assessor, we usually will call real property and say, according to the pilot, this should be on 100% for the next roll. And then the assessor is the one that would put that back on.
We're trying to follow them now, because I didn't have, I didn't have much of a list to follow, but now as they pop up, we'll make sure. I mean, the only one that's come off since I was here was the greenhouses up in Fillmore. Yes? Stilly, it's the restaurant down in Wellsville.
Still water?
The Stillwater, yes.
Now it's closed, now?
I know, we're, the, the board's now talking about, and I've, I've talked to the, I got to talk to the village, town, the county, if they want to try to extend anything. But the reason of their closure was COVID, he's not permanently closed, but that was a COVID-related. So the question is, do you want to extend it this year or stop it? We're going to talk about that Thursday.
So they decided not to reopen, that they can stop?
Yes, for sure.
Go back on a tax roll and all?
Yes, yes. We've had one other, two other cases, Stillwater up in Hume, or Fillmore, and the other one up in Hume, the, I can't remember, the, the truck repair place that both.
RS Mayor.
RS Mayor, thank you, have gone back on the, the tax roll, because they both closed, yeah.
Backing up here to PNM Research, can you explain to me that, does, they own the building now, or?
They are in the process of buying the building.
So they're in the process of buying it from?
From us.
From the IDA?
Right.
Okay. Can you, and they're not paying?
Negotiate a pilot for five years, then after that, they'll be ramping up back and paying taxes.
So they're paying, is it, they're making?
Lease payments to us.
And?
Through the IDA.
And that's like rent to own, or what?
Rent to own, yes, it's a lease to own, yes.
Okay, and then they got, they ran out of space to?
Curtis Wright.
Curtis Wright, now who gets?
We had to approve that, that's them.
They get, so they get the revenue from that?
That's correct.
Okay.
Luckily, we had that space available, because otherwise Curtis Wright would have left the area.
Well, it's, they have left it, but there's, what?
No, I mean, they would have left everything, I mean, they, they kept their engineering staff here, we worked for about six months.
About 30 jobs up there?
Yes.
Temporarily?
Well, there, there, there's a five-year lease, so at least five.
Five years, okay. So, do you know what, you don't, do you know what GE was paying at the time they gave the building away?
No, I do not, but I can get that data.
Would about $34,000 a year be?
Could have been.
A fair assessment?
Are you talking GE on the Tarrington Road parcel?
Yes. It would have been in 2015, was the last year.
Yes, that's what it is.
Yeah.
It could have been, I don't know.
I don't know if it was ever on the roll, so I would have to check that myself. We had a pilot payment with Lovekin.
Right.
Before it was PM Research.
Right.
And Lovekin paid, and then the transition went to GE, and I believe there were no payments made at that point in time, only special districts. I would have to check that to be absolutely sure, but I don't believe there were any payments made between the Lovekin transition to the PM Research with GE in the middle. PM Research is, pilot agreement began in 2018. They have not paid anything but fire district. And their pilots will begin in January of 2023. And that is one pilot that it says in there will be billed by the agency, which is IDA.
Okay, now, going back to when GE, you said GE didn't pay, make any payments on it. Were they paying also special districts at that time?
I believe if any, if anything, they were paying special districts, but I have no record of them paying any kind of a pilot payment or anything during the transition, because that was when the building was being negotiated to be turned over for the $1 million.
Oh, thank you.
I can get you any numbers available that I would, I can get back to you, if I know, if I can, to verify what you said, that may be, I don't remember.
Well, I, I'm just curious, because I, I find it all a little bit confusing, but.
But I'm saying, I, I'll go back, between me and Terry, we can go down and get you the actual details of how that transition happened. I do know, it was only about a year when they basically took over the Lovekin facility, and I think, I'm not sure, I think they were supposed to pay the pilot, but I'm not so sure they ever paid it, because they transitioned out.
My notes have that Lovekin paid from 2012 to 2015, the 15, 16 school bill, they paid roughly, you know, it was varied between $7,800 one year to like $22,000 before the end, '23. And then in '16 and '17, the pilots remained unpaid, and based on a conversation with you, we did not bill them during the transition. And then I don't believe anything happened until the pilot came about for PM Research in '18. So there was a couple years that were in limbo, I guess, is, that's how you want to say that.
And then if I read it correct, we got passed, only one passed due now, and that's Swain.
Right.
$113,000, and a couple of the other ones.
I'm just taking the numbers off what Terry billed them, so.
And a couple of the other ones have gone by the wayside, because they.
There are, that's the only ones that are manufacturing slash recreational, the next page is all clean energy ones. That's the only current ones that we have.
Couple of the other pilots, though, you mentioned failed, and so they're no longer.
They're all back in the tax roll, yeah.
Yeah.
So I didn't list those, because obviously they're expired. These are the only ones that I have on my records, which correspond to what Terry has, I hope.
Um, I'm looking at, at the Swain one that's passed due, does there ever come a time where you would renegotiate the pilot to make it last, so that they can?
They actually did that with Swain at one time, and I'm going to be talking to them again. And that's what actually happened with Alliance up at the top, they had a renegotiation, they actually started in '93. I list 2015, because that was the last time they renegotiated, yes.
And if negotiations don't work in getting payments made, we do have other tools, including.
Which we did with Alliance.
Yes, we filed a civil lawsuit against Alliance, which then encouraged them to settle up, and that's where we got the, the two lump sums.
We don't want to have to do that again with Swain, but we did do that with Alliance, because they'd gotten so bad, it'd been so many years since they did.
And the county and the, the school district, the town, were all part of that civil suit.
All, all the taxing authorities came together, and we went to court.
So the Alliance, that's the Cogen facilities up Fillmore, is that correct?
And they're all paid up right now today. Which is good, because obviously, all those taxing authorities had a lot of money out, I mean, it was over $700,000.
The Swain pilot is, currently, they are paid up through the 2020 Town and County. So they owe 2020 school.
Right.
And 2021 Town and County, and 2021 school. So that's what the, the $113,000 comprises of. They were in the habit of paying us $13,000 every so often, I don't know right off the top of my head when the last time was they did that. But that is what they are currently outstanding, is back to that 2020 school, plus they owe the 2022 billing, so their total is about $209,000 right now.
That's why I wanted to put them both up, so they knew how much to back owe and what they owe now, yes. So that's all the current building-type land stuff, and then the next page is all, not all of our clean energy projects, but most of the ones that have been reported. We still got a couple other ones that closed in 2021, which aren't on here yet. And I just found out, and Terry got a copy of it, that the one, the two that are finished, Rushford and Brightfield, which is in Burns, will be billed this year for a pilot, which is a $2,500 per megawatt, not kilowatt, I apologize. But I was, we were told and corrected, the Brightfield Solar was not full five megawatts, it was only four megawatts, so that billing will not be $12,500, it'll be $10,000. As long as we verify that they only installed four versus five. I thought they'd installed the full five that they got approved, but it is what it is. And the other ones, the NF means they're not finished, so they won't be paying a pilot. Because the pilot only goes, kicks into place whenever all the equipment's in place, and it started to be operational. Not that it's operational every day, but it has to start operation. We don't care if it operates every day, but once it's operational, that's when they pay a pilot.
I think legislator Burns has a question.
I'm sorry.
Yes, are all these solar sites through the, through the IDA, or are there's some that just do it without IDA help?
The only one that I know of in the county right now that is doing without IDA help is Andover, there's one in Andover that they're trying to negotiate their pilots themselves. Because you can do that, just that then you have to go to all the taxing authorities and get them all to agree. The advantage of coming to us is we can do that in one fell swoop.
Thank you.
But all the other ones have been in our, and gone through the IDA, because they may want other benefits to the tax benefits.
Could you make sure you're talking to Ned Mike?
I'm sorry, apologize. So, yeah, only one I know of that's not gone through the IDA is Andover, right now it's proposing to do their own, but everybody else has come through the IDA. And we have, we don't have any of the large ones on there yet, because they're not, no pilots have been finalized with anything other than what I have on here. Mike?
Okay, um, now do they pay, they don't, when they pay the pilot, are you talking about all the taxes?
They pay all the property taxes on all these clean energy projects separately from what the equipment is. This is only a pilot on the equipment that's been installed on the site. So when somebody does one of these clean energy projects, there's a win for the county, because if it had an ag district, it loses the ag district exemption, it goes fully back on the tax roll. The, 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 the negative side you can say is that we're giving them a discounted rate on the equipment, but the equipment is also equipment, you know what I'm saying? So it's really not buildings, it's equipment, it's, it's not, it's semi-permanent.
Dr. Clark, that's a uniform policy, correct?
That's in our uniform test.
And you amended that to include solar recently, correct?
Include solar, this, this is actually in our policy right now, yes.
Okay. And, but your non-energy pilots?
Would be the buildings and land and the, everything on the site, yes. The clean energy ones are separate and different, you still, they have to still pay all the property taxes for the land, we're just giving them a pilot on the equipment itself installed.
Well, you mentioned before, when we were talking about the others, about the special districts, they still have to pay the special.
They still have to pay special district, no matter what.
And do all, the, all, the pilots, they still pay, pay school taxes, is it, no?
No, the pilots are for all, all taxing authorities.
So then.
So they're paying all their property taxes to all taxing authorities like normal for the land. The pilot is split between all the taxing authorities based upon their pilot, or on their percentage of what they tax.
So the.
And then the town gets something different, the town has a host agreement, but they would get a similar number directly to the town.
Clean energy ones are a better deal for the taxpayers, and I assume that the rest of the taxpayers aren't making up that lobby, right?
Yeah, they're not making up the property tax. Yeah, they're not making up the property tax and really the other stuff, whether or not it was taxed, it wasn't before. So they, they didn't take anything off the tax rolls, it actually increased the tax roll.
The, the pilots are wholly exempt except for special districts.
Right.
There's other real property tax law exemptions for investment that does not involve the IDA. That could be partially exempt from everything, including special districts, and we do have some of those out there too, but that does not involve the IDA. Those are things that investors could go and apply through their assessors and be granted an exemption for.
Yeah, they don't have to come through the IDA, I'm just listing all the ones that came through the IDA and we are responsible for them.
In Craig, I know you mentioned the micro enterprise.
Right.
That's a different sort of relationship the county has with the IDA. Um, the county applied for it and was received a CDBG grant. We partnered with the IDA to be our sub-recipient and manage that grant. And Craig, maybe you, if you could tell a little bit about what the micro enterprise loan does? Because that is, it's pretty interesting and it helps a number of small businesses out.
We're, we were successful, so we're gonna probably get another one, but it was a two hundred thousand dollar grant. Of which we gave out a hundred and seventy thousand dollars worth of grants, most of them in the thirty thousand dollar range. So it's not a loan, it's a grant, and to start up, help a small business to start up and or add an employee. Small means it has to be less than five people, so it can't be a large operation, they're all micro enterprise grants. And I don't have the list in front of me, but I know we did one with pens, making pens at uh, I'm trying to think of the name of the company.
That one was Hardy Penrite.
Hardy Pen, thank you, you probably have them all in front.
I, I don't have the list in front of me, I do remember that one.
Piece of equipment, that was kind of a cool one. I know there was another one that basically did some antique store over in Angelica. So we've helped two or three, four different businesses start up and or expand. If the startup, they don't have to add an employee, but if it's an existing business, they have to add an employee. So we're gonna get another one, it was very, what happened is they had to go through training through a corridor incubator works. And once they were trained and they had a business plan, and I must say, I can send you the business plans. The business plans were the best business plans that anybody had seen, they did a really good job, and they're all still operational that I know of.
And this would be something, although it's, the county received the grant, we, we probably wouldn't have the resources to manage this on our own or to examine the application. So we did partner with the IDA for that, it's gone fairly well.
So far, I think it's gone very well.
We just applied for it in nineteen, I think we started it in twenty, looking at the applications.
We, and we've done well enough, I know we can get another go around, we're trying to get more money this next time. Because we had probably double the number of people that were interested in getting those grants. Because thirty thousand dollars doesn't sound like a lot, but it's a lot when you're a small company. No, I know bigger companies don't, but I'm just saying for a small company, it's really a big deal because that thirty thousand dollars can make a big difference in starting a company. Buying some equipment.
I think we were using um Step Ahead, Vintage Finds, Hardy Penrites, and Pelican Inspections, does that sound right?
Yeah, that sounds right. They're all written up in the Cuba Patriot, so they're all, every project was, yeah. So it didn't have to be any kind of a company, it could be anything from a restaurant to a manufacturing, it did not matter what it was, which was kinda nice too.
Craig?
Yes?
Let me know if this isn't a good time, is, is that your last slide?
That's all I have for the IDA, before we do that, and I'm sure there, I, I know what you're gonna ask, and that's fine, we'll talk about it.
You do?
Questions about how the IDA operates. Because you talk, you wanna talk about the water line, which is fine.
Well, what, for the benefit of the new board members and maybe some existing board members that have no idea.
Sure.
Just can you go through the, the recent history of, of the county's financial interest?
Sure.
In the IDA, just in general?
Sure, well, what happened, there's two things that have happened, but it was all basically along the water line. In two thousand and twelve, this board agreed and wanted to do a water line. They were not allowed to actually do the water line for many different reasons, so they asked the IDA to do the water line, which we did on behalf of the county. And there was a three point five million dollar bond that was taken out to basically fund that project. And then we kept going on and on and on, and finally we pulled the trigger, the water line's now installed. And uh, we've bought some land, two pieces of land, uh, we had a lot of lawyers fees and other startup fees, engineering fees. And the water line itself was installed. And then at the end of the day, we needed some extra funds because, one, the water line is very helpful, that's how we got the travel center. If we hadn't had that, we wouldn't have the travel center, wouldn't have the opportunity to develop the crossroads without the water line. So the water line was the right thing to do, but the county has now an economic development contract with IDA to assist us in economic development, which primarily has been to finalize and, and ma- make sure the water line continues to run. So we, there was a contract two years ago that basically was with the IDA. And it has been very helpful because it made sure that we had the funds to finish up the water line as well as keep it operational.
And what were the terms of that contract?
The terms of the contract were four hundred and fifty thousand dollars over two years, which is all, most are economic development in a general sense. But I, and we, you can see it through our audited statements that almost all of it's gone to the water line.
And that contract's now expired, so.
Right.
So the bond is outstanding, there's no payments made on the bond?
The bond, well, we, all the payments have been made on the bond. We've been paying interest since two thousand, whenever it started.
Okay, so what are the, what are the?
And now we're paying, now it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar year with the principal and interest.
Okay, and is it, is it the revenue that you've been starting to receive through some of these completed clean energy projects? That's, that's enabling you to pay the, the bond?
Two years, they all paid through that, the, the money that was contracted through the county.
The county used the money that, with the economic development contract to pay the bond?
And finalize, finalize the, the actual construction, yes.
So now that, now that that contract's expired, is, is the IDA in a position where we'll be able to continue to pay that bond?
We would have enough money in the, in the near future, I don't know how long for the long future. Obviously, the more we pay for the bond, the less we can do for the county, but yes. We have adequate resources at this time, if that's the question for.
But the IDA owns the water line at this point?
ACUC, yes, IDA, yes.
Do you know the, the value of the water line?
It was one point five million dollars to put it in thereabouts.
Craig, you just mentioned ACUC, probably not every board member realizes you have two corporations under the IDA's umbrella.
One is the, the CRC, the Capital Resource Corporation, which does our bonding, they're the ones that'll be doing the bonding if approved for Houghton. Uh, the, the IDA doesn't do the bonding directly, it's another, it's another, it's another unit underneath the IDA. And the ACUC is the actual entity that does all operations of the actual water line. Allegheny County Utility Corporation.
And it seems subject, um. Would you have been able to get the travel center up there without a public water line?
No.
No, uh, and even though I know it's two different pots of money, uh. The, but the sales tax, which we only got two places in the county to get, basically get our share of the local tax dollar, that's sales tax, property tax. Is it your sense that we've already paid for that water line in the increase in sales tax generated by the travel center?
Increase in sales tax of the travel center more than pays for any annual operational cost, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, Craig, what do we get from the state for the water to the, to their stop up there? Do they pay us so much a year or what?
They pay based upon usage like everyone else.
Okay, so it's on the usage?
It's on the usage, they, they actually put their own water line in though.
Yeah.
That the, the spur that goes to the, to the actual uh rest stop, they paid a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to put that installed. So we did not pay for that.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
But they still pay for the water they use.
I think that, um, I'd like to ask about um the cheese plant.
Okay.
Um, could you just quickly review um how that started? I, as I recall, it started because they can't, they wanted to find another, another location. And the IDA was uh involved in trying to find another location within the county.
They started, I don't remember the year, I apologize, it's been so, it seems like it's been forever. But when they first started uh through Invest Buffalo Niagara, they came to us in E S D. And asked us for locations in the counties, not knowing who the client was, and they do that often, so I had no idea. So for about three or four months, it was May to October of that year, we were trying to find sites, and they told us about sites. And me and Kira says, who is this, it's, they, a whole lot of water, a whole lot of power. We thought it was some Chinese company, we had no idea, because to be honest with you, they were asking some very strange locations that we couldn't figure out why they picked them. Then in October of that year, we finally had a meeting with Empire State Development, and that's when I found out that it was Great Lakes Cheese. So we met with them, that was all confidential, they wanted to share with nothing, they asked us to sign a non-disclosure agreement. And, and again, they were, usually you have a site selector brought in that kind of gives them sites. They were doing their own site selection, in other words, they did not hire somebody to find them a site. They were pinging all over the county to find sites that were big enough, and the real issue was power, more than even water. Although they needed a amount, a fairly a large amount of water, the biggest issue was power. And we couldn't find, I learned a whole lot more about power in the county than I ever wanted to know, but there's very few, if any, locations that had the power they required. They were requiring more power than used, used in Wellsville even when Presser was there. It was massive, and so the problem was, was defining a substation or someplace in the county that had the, the electric. And then we could figure out the water if we had to. And sewer too were always options because we could do the onsite sewer plant, a large enough plant. So we worked with them for a couple of years on finding, looking at different sites, they kept pinging sites. I think there was sixty sites that they, they had looked at, probably about a dozen that we had looked at with them that said they were possible sites. And then we also made sure that we looked at two or three sites, I think there were three sites we ended up really looking at hard in Cuba, trying to keep them in Cuba. From the very beginning, they always want, they always said they wanted to stay within twenty to twenty-five miles of Cuba to make sure the Cuba employees were, continued to be employed no matter where they went. And so through that whole process, they ended up deciding that the only site that they really liked, after we pushed pretty hard, did a lot of work on different sites, including in Cuba. Uh, site work, uh, they decided they really wanted to be at the crossroads. Which was unfortunately, the farmer didn't wanna sell it, as everyone knows. Power was still an issue, it was a twenty million dollar problem, but they were willing to do that.
Interrupt you right there. Um, initially, when they looked, looked at that site, power was not a problem?
Power was always a problem.
Was always a problem?
It was always a.
Didn't seem like it, it came up as a big issue, at least publicly, until the bitter end, kind of.
No, it was always, well, I'll tell you what happened at the bitter end, which changed the problem, but it was always a twenty million dollar problem. Uh, and interestingly enough, the family and the company, uh, which I was surprised that was, was willing to foot the twenty million dollar problem. Because obviously, we don't have twenty million dollars, the state wouldn't give them twenty million dollars, we couldn't find the twenty million dollars.
Our GE wouldn't give them twenty.
No, and they wouldn't give them twenty million dollars, so, so basically, that's what happened is, so they decided that was the site. And again, I don't remember the timeframe, because I don't have the detail in front of me, but the timeframe was, they agreed, it was, I know it was the winter, it was, let's see, it would've been twenty, nineteen, oh twenty, sorry, not, winter night of two twenty, twenty twenty. When they finally decided that they wanted to go to the crossroads. After actually delaying the project about six to eight months because they were really looking hard on one last site in Cuba, which I thought would work. But unfortunately, when we did the geotech, it did not work. So they came back and said, well, let's go to the, to the Belmont site, crossroads, and that's the only site that they found acceptable. And they were pretty clear that was the only site that they were acceptable to invest money at. And it really makes, it's a really good location, it's right on I eighty-six, it's right on nineteen, a big flat land right next to the river. I mean, it had everything it needed except for the twenty million dollar power and the fact that the landowner wouldn't sell. So we were asked to go to eminent domain, which we did go to eminent domain. And in fact, we were at the point where we would have had the land, still paid them more than fair value. And then there was a negotiation at that time of way over fair value. So they were gonna get the land in July or August of this last year. But they pulled the plug because, one, they didn't get the land finished in their timeframe, which is quicker than that. And two, uh, had a lot of problems with our G and E. What, it, it was a twenty million dollar project, they wouldn't guarantee when it would be done, in other words, when they could plug it in. And, and how they were actually gonna have to fund it, that was a taxable problem, so they were gonna have to eat it. So there was two issues that our G and E wouldn't bend on or help, and they actually canceled a meeting in February or March, December of the year, I've got it on my notes. The first meeting they were supposed to have, they were really talking about the logistics, they, our G and E even canceled the meeting. And that's why, when you see in the paper, there's two reasons that they decided not about the site. One is they didn't get the land in a timely fashion, and two, there were power issues. And the power issue was our G and E was not very, being very cooperative. And I can tell you right now, you can call any IDA director, any economic developer in the state, and they will tell you the same thing. So it wasn't unusual that they were a problem in Allegheny County.
So they go to Cataragis County and find a site pretty, pretty rapidly, uh, or compared to the, the time that was spent on the crossroad site. How was it that the Cataragis County and their IDA were able to move so quickly?
We moved just as quickly, the only issue was whether or not they could decide which site they wanted, you see what I'm saying? Plus the fact that they had a willing person to sell. The problem is, we did not have a willing person to sell, and they selected a site which, where they did not have a willing person to sell. Whereas the one over in Franklinville, Farmerville, they have a willing person to sell, and it was again, a flat site and a different power company.
And they had plenty of power.
A little power company with a one fifteen KVA line, so there still is an expansion, but it's a lot easier, it's not a twenty million dollar problem.
Thank you.
Well, didn't Cataragis County itself and, and their IDA uh offer them more financial incentives?
At the end of the day, I don't know what they actually finally offered, I know they, I saw in the paper something like six million dollars, I don't know what it was. I'm just guessing, I don't remember now. That's not why they left.
No, I'm not saying that, I just asked, asking the question.
We had agreed to already work with them and upgrade the water system, so they had the water, that's all they were worried about from us.
And the electric?
Yeah.
Of course, our G and E doesn't do their own work anymore anyways, they subcontract it all out. Could, could not, we have sped that all up and uh, if we'd done that ourselves.
The, our G and E said that one time they would allow a subcontractor to do it, because they do typically do that, that would save them money and actually time. But they never got to that stage, they never had those initial meetings with our G and E, our G and E just dragged their feet. We couldn't have done it unless our G and E says, you know, they would have to approve us, they would have to approve the subcontractor.
Because I know I, I, you know, from uh former employees of the R G and E, I, I've heard directly and indirectly that engineers, that uh, they didn't understand what the problem was, it, why it couldn't have been done faster, quicker, cheaper, you know?
Well, they, they understood, they may not, may not, who you talk to, but I, I know I was talking to all the, uh, Joe Rizzo, who does all the economic development and their engineers directly, so. I mean, it was unfortunate, but I wasn't surprised, it was the twenty million, it was just, it wasn't just the twenty million dollars, it was they wouldn't guarantee when it would be done. And they just weren't cooperating. Yes, Jan?
Can I go back to the water line for a minute?
Oh, sure.
Um, I'm just curious, how does that get billed? And is the town of Friendship established a water district where they're billing?
No, we're billing.
So where's the money going to the IDA?
To the ACUC.
So Friendship is not getting anything?
Oh, yeah, they're, they're, they're billing for all the water upfront, there's a good agreement with them. There's an agreement with them. So they're actually, this is the best thing that ever happened to Friendship. Yeah, they're, they're servicing the line for us, yes. Don't worry, they're making money.
The county is also a party to that agreement as well.
It's a three-party agreement, yes. So there is a contract with the Friendship that, or to actually supply the water and they actually help maintain the line, yes. So there's no, there's no cost to Friendship or the, or the town.
Any other questions?
I could just maybe add, since this is kind of like an intro on the IDA. We, you know, everybody understands the county's relationship with the IDA. You did a great job with the overview of the board, what you do, the pilots. We talked about the micro enterprise. One of the things we didn't mention is that the IDA is also the county's landlord. So the IDA owns the buildings out at Crossroads, which the county leases because we don't have enough office space. And we have Office of the Aging, Veterans, part of our DSS, Adult Services is out there, our Emergency Management, Planning and Development, as well as other offices. So we have that leased from the IDA, as well as the parking facility, which we used to build a park and ride with money from, from the federal government through our mass transportation system. And we've done some upgrades out there, new bus shelter and other things. This is all, although there are county offices and county projects, we can only do them because we leased the space from the IDA. We were out of other options here on our own campus.
What part of your budget was that revenue?
There is, well, that was the problem until we started doing these pilots. It wasn't nearly enough to pay our bills, is that what you're asking?
That was the major part, then?
Yeah, that, until, until we started with Lufkin, which is now PM Research, the only thing that we're living off of was the actual renting of the facilities. And it was not enough to keep the facilities up as well as pay bills, yes.
Yes, just speaking generally, I have had some concerns and I've, I've had them in the past. In fact, when I first came on the board, we, we had, back in 2010, there was a position on the IDA that was up to have it filled, that there was a vacancy. And I questioned at the time that, that there wasn't, it didn't appear to be enough equal representation on the IDA board from throughout the county. Obviously, we've got five legislative districts here. I think that there ought to be a fair representation on the board from, from those districts. If you have more than one from one district because of a special need or skill set or whatever they bring to the board, that's, that's one thing. But that concerns me greatly that, that we have, you know, that everything's open, fair and transparent and that we have equal representation and say in any, any financial investments or adventures, I guess, that may go on in the county. It appears sometimes over the years in the past, and I'm going back, way back in the past, so that there were, they've had issues there before. I believe there was one IDA director that got in quite a bit of trouble. Not that I'm suggesting that's the case now.
That's history, I know what happened, yeah.
Right. So I think not only do you have to have equal lobbyists on that, you know, every district has, people are looking out for either directly or indirectly, you know, subconsciously maybe. They're concerned about their own particular areas. I think it's important for everybody to have, have a seat at the table. And, but that's my opinion, so. And that's no, not saying anything negative about any of the members on the board. I know almost all of them and I think they're great people.
You've told me that before and I understand your concern and your, and how you thought, think about that and I think that's fine. I do think we could look at that when we try to add people, to try to maybe assure that we balance it if we can find the right people in those districts. But we need to first make sure they're all the right businessmen and women because that's how we make our decisions. So it's not, it's made, it's always made, and I, and I can tell you for a fact, there has not been one discussion on location of anything that we've discussed and you can see the clean energy projects are all across the county, so. I wish that we had more economic development across every sector in the county as well. But, you know, it's interesting. One thing I was prepared for and I'll, I'll just add because Stuben County just recently has announced two different projects in Stuben County that are really good projects, both in Bath. I talked to the IDA director yesterday, how did you get those? And he was pretty honest with me. He tried to get them at different locations in the county. There was only one location they would go to because they had already decided between their logistics and their corporate headquarters. And it was the only place they would even locate was Bath. So he had nothing to do with location, he had nothing to do with attraction. They both came to and said, here's where you want to put a facility, would you help us? And I think that tends to happen because they're going to go to areas where they have the right facilities, the right power requirements and the right people. So we can try to, you know, go across county, but there's always going to be some segments where it's much more difficult to do economic development. But I'm pro doing it every place, you know that.
I just want to respond and I think, Mike, for your input on that, but I would like to voice my concerns are what I feel is important for the best people to be on these boards is to best, is to find the people with the best information that each one of these boards needs. And in this case, if it's financial, banking, business sense, I think it would be very hard to be territorial in Allegheny County. And there's some districts that there might not be someone who is even willing to be on this board. I also think we need to, I think when it comes to economic development, I'm going to throw this out there too, we need to be thinking regional in this day and age. We can't put barriers up around Allegheny County. We have to be able to work with our neighbors. Our success is success for our, with our neighboring communities. We don't have everything that we need for economic development here in Allegheny County. But we can rely on our neighbors and because of our neighbors, people may want to come into Allegheny County. So I just want to raise that to a broader sense that when we talk about economic development, I think we need to be talking regionally, not just Allegheny County, and then I'm going to hone down, not just whose district is this in? If it's in District 2, it benefits all of Allegheny County. We're small enough that, to be territorial about our districts, it would be nice to find somebody from each one of our districts, but I don't know how realistic it is. And to make that a mandate for successful boards, I think we'd be struggling down the road to be able to do it. But if we can, that's fine. But I think it's more important to have the background of the person and the interest of that person on the boards.
Yes, Gretchen.
Thanks for going over that, Craig. I guess one of the questions I have in being new to this board and, you know, we just approved the 7.5 million dollars. And I'm wondering how that works through economic development with the IDA? Is there a strategic plan for the big picture for that? I'm just wondering how it operates with the IDA or if it even does operate with the IDA?
Well, when we, when I brought forward the project and I think the new legislators were here, were they, were you not here with one project we talked about trying to fund? You were, right? Because that's been a long-term goal of obviously doing the crossroads, not just the Travel Center, but the crossroads in a bigger picture. So that's why that's the one that popped up and that is a strategic plan. I mean, it's been since 2012 to do something out there. And that would include, as I, as I said as a picture, is probably at least one hotel, at least one or two restaurants, as well as some other facility out there. In fact, that was, I think it was a plan that Kier Gerlum made in 2010, maybe? It was well before even the water line. So it's been a long-term goal of the county planning side, the economic development side. And as Mike's always reminding me, it's right in the middle of the county. So I think it is that, that's the strategy right now, is to work on that one. Are there other strategies? Definitely, we want to work with all the large and small manufacturers. But first, we gotta, if we get that going, one, it kickstarts a lot of different things by having, as you well know, having a hotel, of a branded hotel available right along I-86 makes a big difference. So that's the first project of, of that money we're trying to get going. I, my goal is, because right now, right in the infrastructure way, once we get it designed, I think we can go with the, with the engineering firm and probably get at least half of that funded through state and federal funds. And then we would go through other projects. And at the same time, we're going to continue to try to attract businesses and expand the ones we have. But that's the strategic, that's the initial plan to work right there.
Thank you. I guess the one question I also have too, since it's money that we're putting in, the 7.5 million from the county, I know it goes into a special fund, that things are approved of. I'm just, I guess operationalize, I'm looking at that.
That money is money that, it's, it's like an earmark in your, your fund balance. It hasn't been appropriated, it hasn't been spent. We've designated it as a board here.
Available.
Available for economic development. It allows Craig, when he's talking to people, to say, boy, Allegheny County has stepped up. They've earmarked money for economic development. What would need to happen is there'd have to be a specific use for it. It'd have to come back to this board. You'd have to make appropriations, have contracts, you'd have to go through legal, but it would be this board's decision on how to use it and when to use it. So although there is a strategic plan and it has been early 2000s, I think they talked about hotel developments out at Crossroads and this would be a possible good use of this money, that is still for this board to determine on how and when to spend it.
Okay. I'm just, I, like I said, I'm looking for the best way to utilize it and have the big impact. And it's obviously, we have a relationship with the IDA and how that works under two different governing. I'm confused and maybe I shouldn't be.
No, I think it's fair to say, it's a very confusing organization. I think there's-
Gee, thanks.
I think there's a general misconception that the IDA is the county and they are a separate legal entity with a separate board, although this board is charged with appointing those board members. But you function outside of this. We do have, as we kind of recited, a lot of different relationships with the IDA. But they are their own separate agency. And I think today, you got a very good overview of a lot of things that are going on. Certainly, you know, you didn't get into the weeds or really in-depth in any of those topics, but that'll allow you to ask better questions going forward, figure out what more information you need. And then generally, you know, I think we started out, we were kind of waiting for you, Dr. Clark, and we were talking about different needs of the counties and we talked about communications being one of them. Are there ways that we could improve our own communications between the county board and the IDA? If you have ideas along those lines, I think that might help the relationship going forward too.
Yeah, I know, Rich has come in and the board members could come in anytime you want if there's some, some reason to come in to report or discuss things. But yeah, on that particular project, that land is owned by the IDA already. And we'll, we will be bringing forward to the board some of the initial engineering that we'll do ourselves. And then once we get plans and understand what we need to do, then that's when we would try to access the funds because we don't, I mean, to do a $7 million project, we don't have those kind of resources.
Yeah, Craig, that property was actually purchased with the money that the county put forward, right?
Well, it was through the bond.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so. It's your, it's your property, but we still got the bond on it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Rumfeld.
So it'll be a coordinated effort. There's, be nothing moving forward except for the initial stuff. It'll all come back to this board.
Mr. Rumfeld.
We're not spending any money without board approval, don't worry.
I just have one, thank you for enlightening us and educating us today because I've learned a lot. But now they've talked about the micro businesses and the big businesses, is there anything in the works or anything out there for the ones that don't fall under either?
Well, that's why now that we have some funds coming in and we're going to have to plan on that because we know some other projects that are coming, other larger clean energy projects, we'll actually have some funds that we can build up, either as brand or revolving loan funds. We never had that bank account until just now. And we got a plan, like, I've already been asked about the water line. We got a plan how we're going to operate because we're, we just like, we want a plan just like you plan and the towns and villages plan. You don't want to go like this with your budgets. You want to have a fairly flat-lined budget. And, but that's the goal, is to actually get some funds out, yes, to the, to the in-between companies.
I have one more quick question in regards to what legislator Rumfeld asked. And talking to some of the towns and villages, they're looking at their water systems and a lot of them really aren't, some of them aren't really at the point where they even have their engineering plan drawn up yet, which is required before they can move forward to try to get funding for that. Will that funding be opened up and help some of the towns and villages or does that fall under another funding source?
I think we would encourage them and work with them to get some ESD funds because ESD will fund those kind of planning projects. I mean, if they can't get it funded, we could probably talk to people how we can get some initial work done.
Does ESD fund the study that needs to be done beforehand? Okay, thank you.
In fact, a lot of communities have got those grants. They're very, the planning grants are pretty simple to get, the initial engineering work.
Yeah.
It's tough sometimes to get the bigger money.
Okay. I was at a village joint town meeting and that was a discussion and-
I think they're always confused on process because ESD doesn't make it simple to understand, but I know-
That is true.
I know, I know between myself and Kier, we can help them on those.
Okay, all right, thank you.
DEC forced our sewer district and county IDA to make some changes and we got both the 50,000 grand for the engineering and a million something for the project. It's out there.
Good, I'll send them that way.
You just have to be able to know who to get to, to get the money, yeah.
Other questions? Okay, it's been very thorough. There is one thing that I need to bring up, but I need to do it in executive session. For the purpose of the medical, financial credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or corporation, I'd appreciate a motion to go into executive session. Mr. Havy, second, Mrs. Root. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's carry.
Phil, the only thing I'd like to-